All right, well then I guess we'll begin our work session. Today is Monday, March 30th, 2020. For those of you who have not attended a work session before, and we do not typically stream these live or have these televised live, but today we're doing that because of the seriousness of the topic at hand. And with that, I will turn it over to the county manager, Mr. Stikelether, to talk about the county's position on certain things.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At first, I'm going to recognize our sheriff, Matt Bykert. He's going to give an update on the restrictions that we have in place for visitors and non-resident property owners and the enforcement of those restrictions, as well as the enforcement of the governor's order that is effective as of about three minutes ago. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sheriff Bykert.
Yes, good evening, everybody. We've been enforcing the county declarations since March 21st. Things have been going well. We've had a checkpoint in cooperation with Dare County. We've separated the checkpoints, so it's in one central location, but two separate areas, and it seemed to help the traffic move very well. We've had a station to monitor traffic coming into Corolla. We've also had our boat, the county boat, out on the waters. We started a marine patrol last summer doing safety inspections, and we continue that today, but we've been very successful, seeing several boats the past few days that are out of state, and we've given them some information and turned some of those around that maybe we're not aware of our declaration, but gave them the information on that. With 5:00 here with the governor's executive order, we're hoping that everything goes well. Everyone seems to be, or have been following these guidelines that he's put in place already. Everything seems to be going very well at our takeout restaurants, at our places that we do gather. We haven't seen any real issues. We had a few reported that turned out not to be in the mass gathering numbers as what we thought. Now that it's at 10, we'll monitor those, and being in the community that we are, everyone has seemed to comply very well and very happy to comply.
Sheriff, did you hear about the complaint at Food Line, bringing in employees? Are you aware of that at all?
Are you talking about visa working employees? Yes, I have heard about that, and from what I understand, they've been here for some time, definitely before March 21st, when our county declaration went into place.
I can address that. We had our economic development director reach out to the Food Line, which is one of the businesses where the J-1 workers have come into. These J-1 workers have been here for, have been in the country for many months. They did come into Corolla after our declaration was put into place, but as employees of an essential business, that is legal. So our declaration says that if you are a worker who is coming into Corolla for an essential business, then that is legal. They had been here prior to any restrictions, and actually, the J-1 program has been suspended, so no new folks can come in, but they are totally legal to be here. We had questions about that from the community through social media. We looked into it, but everything there is legal and meets all of our orders.
I've got a question for the sheriff. I was contacted by a couple individuals regarding the stay-at-home order now, and their question was me, are the deputies going to, if they see someone that they suspect is just joyriding, are they going to pull them over and check to see what they're doing on the roads, or is that even going to be enforced at all?
We have spoken, or I've spoken with the North Carolina Sheriff's Association today. There are so many activities that are allowed, whether you were going to a fast food, takeout restaurant, public outside activities at a park to work. It would indiscriminately cause us to stop people without a reasonable suspicion that they were doing things that were not essential. So at this time, unless we have specific information, we would not be able to indiscriminately stop those driving.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the sheriff?
I wanted to ask the sheriff, has the number of people now who can be in a place been reduced, the number?
As I understand it, at 5:00 today, it's 10 where it was, yes ma'am, where it was 50.
Thank you.
We're 10 on the number.
That's why we're 10 on the number.
That's why Ace is in the hall. That's a separate room.
But that does not limit people in Food Line or any of the other essential businesses, does it?
Correct. In a grocery store, no, we would not, and I don't think his executive order would require less than 10, but still respect the social distancing in all circumstances where there may be more than 10 at a grocery store. The hospitals, of course, not in our county, but doctors' offices are asking people to remain in their car, definitely keeping, taking the number of chairs out of offices that are essential.
I think the important word is gathering, in that, that you're going to a place for a specific purpose. It's a different animal gathering.
Yes, sir.
I think it's important, too, for the community to understand that these are not punitive actions. The stay-at-home order is not a punitive thing. It works well if we all comply with it and understand the reasoning behind it. So I'm, and I'm not trying to speak for the sheriff, I'll speak for county staff, emergency management. The more that folks respect these orders and these rules that are currently in place, there's a purpose for it. I have the utmost confidence that a large majority, and hopefully, all of the citizens of Currituck County will respect the rules. You know, unfortunately, we do have law enforcement if folks decide not to do that. I think it's both mine and the sheriff's hope that it won't come to that, that everybody will comply.
And they have, for the most part, they really have.
So, you know, we're hopeful. We understand there's a lot of confusion around it. There is a frequently asked question guideline out from the governor's office that does answer a lot of those, and we've got that available. We also, you can call our emergency management office if you have any questions about that. And if you, if you do have an issue, the way that that works, and you feel like something needs to be investigated, at that point, we turn it over to the sheriff's office, and it goes from there.
Sheriff Bykert, could you explain exactly what monitoring on the Outer Banks, what you're doing?
The, we've had reports of, and to say specifically, monitoring at the Duck Corolla Line. Had reports of people being smuggled in in commercial-type vehicles, so that was our purpose there, was to deter and to catch, apprehend anybody that used that method to get people into Corolla.
That's a good question. So what do you do? So you've got people bringing people over to Knott's, from Knott's Island essentially down to Caroosa via boats. If you find somebody to repeat the offender trying to bring people down, do you guys have to reinforce, I guess, the sheriff's?
Yes, in constant contact with our district attorney's office, we have decided to either charge with criminal summons if someone violates, or give them a citation as much as we can with nonviolent offenders. We don't want to bring any new individuals into our jail that may contaminate our inmate population. So we are out giving information, especially on the waterway. We'll be out there for the indefinite future, as long as we need to be out there, and hopefully we'll have some assistance. And Mary Beth, our emergency management director, has helped us getting some more boats out on the water, or potentially get some more boats out on the water. But yes, to educate, some from Virginia may not have known about our declaration, and we've turned several, or more than several boats around.
Anything further for the sheriff? Thank you very much. Sheriff, appreciate you coming out this evening.
Thank you all very much, and thank you for all your support. The sheriff's office really appreciates it.
Happy to be here for you. I will point out, as the sheriff leaves, for those who are watching the live stream or listening on the phone, we are rotating staff in and out, because with seven commissioners, county manager, and a clerk, that puts us at nine employees, so we are rotating folks in and out as needed. The county attorney will come in now, trying to make sure that we meet the requirements of the governor's orders they've been put forward. Also, the meeting room has been set up in order for us to practice proper social distancing protocols. The next thing on the list is operational for internal county employees. There was an act that was passed by the federal government, the Families First Coronavirus Act. It had some language in it that has to be adopted by all employers, not just the county. That language expands the reasons that somebody can use FMLA. It expands it to allow for, if you needed to provide childcare for your child because of Corona-related, or a COVID-19-related closure, you can do that. So that falls under the normal FMLA, 12 weeks, and the, kind of the bigger part of that is an additional 80 hours of sick leave that every employee is entitled to if you work for an employer that has more than 50 employees. That has to be extended to employees beyond their regular sick time that they might accrue. It gets a little more complicated than that, because on that time, the employer and the employee are not required to pay the social security portion of FICA. So that goes into effect April 2nd. There is a 30-day non-enforcement period from the federal government, so they're basically giving you a 30-day grace period. We are going to have, have it ready to roll out by April 2nd here, using our payroll software. Just so you all know what we're going to do, we're going to go ahead and credit all employees 80 hours of a special code of sick time. It'll be called emergency sick leave, which is what it's called in the act. After they exhaust that leave for COVID-related issues, then they would start to use the sick time that the county provides as a benefit. The FMLA also will be tracked separately, so that we can make sure that we're meeting all the guidelines that we have to from an FMLA standpoint. The other thing that it does, which is a little unique, is it extends that emergency-paid sick leave to part-time employees. The way that we are addressing that is if a part-time employee has a COVID-related issue, and it would cover their regularly scheduled timeframe, then we will essentially figure out how many hours they worked on average per week over the previous six months, and that's how we'll calculate the number of hours that we would be required to pay. One thing to make sure that folks understand about that act, and we've had guidance from the School of Government, from UNC, that part-time employees covered by that aren't just, if your place of business is shut down, it doesn't automatically cover you. So people who are covered because of a broad spectrum order, like a stay-at-home order we have in North Carolina, that is not a COVID-19-related issue. It has to be an individual isolation order, individual quarantine order, where you, once again, if you have to care for a dependent, or I believe an elderly loved one, I think, also qualifies under that. So it's not just childcare, but if you have to care for any family member, then that emergency-paid sick leave goes into effect. Just some, some other updates for the board, and I want the folks out there to know that we are listening, but we are being very strict with the rules that are in place. We get a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails every day from, especially from non-resident property owners who express their displeasure with not being able to come here in one form or fashion. What, the restriction that Currituck County has put in place was not done lightly. Obviously, there are a lot of things that are being done in our current, in the society today that we've never, we haven't seen in 100 years. New rules, new regulations. So I know folks out there are frustrated, and they are, I mean, some of them are very angry, some of them are scared, but it's important, I think, for folks to understand, on the Outer Banks in particular, we have very limited medical facilities. The idea behind this isn't just to slow the spread. The disease is going to go to every county in this state. It's already in Currituck County, and that's just a case that we know about. It's pretty well, the Alamo Regional Health Services and every health department that I know of has basically stated that they are sure that there are cases that are going around in our communities across this nation that we're not aware of, because the symptoms are either asymptomatic, or the symptoms are mild enough that they've never received a test. The reason for that restriction is not to stop the virus from coming here. It is to practice good stay-at-home, social distancing guidelines, but more importantly, it's not to bring a population here that is so dense that it can't be adequately treated with the medical facilities we have on our Outer Banks. There's 19, I think it's 19 beds in that hospital. None of them have ICU capabilities. It would, it potentially could be several hours between an ambulance ride to a facility that could handle a serious case, and that's not just COVID cases. I think that's where people have, are kind of not grasping the full potential of this issue if you overwhelm the medical infrastructure. STEMI's, major heart attacks, strokes, those things are still happening. The things that happened before are happening in the same number that they were prior to, and if you have a dense population with not enough medical infrastructure, and then you pile a COVID caseload on top of it that it's not ready for, on top of the normal things that already happen, then your potential for disaster greatly increases. So this, the way that the staff has viewed it and the way that the conversations have occurred, the restriction on non-resident property owners and visitors has done as much for the safety of those individuals as it is for folks who are here. I understand that some of those folks are in areas that have a high caseload, you know, and, and that's frustrating for them, but it's not about the caseload here, it's about the medical infrastructure. Having said that, we've had a lot of requests for exceptions from folks. Everybody has a very unique situation. We're always sympathetic, we're always compassionate, but the staff has been very firm in not allowing exceptions. The, because that's a slippery slope, and we try to be fair and equitable to everybody. Having said that, we have had some people who have brought up an issue, and I feel like that it probably is worth a discussion amongst the board. We have folks who own property here, they're non-resident property owners. They say that I would like to come down and do work on my home, construction work, or where even if they're not going to do the construction work, they want to act as their own general contractor and be on site. And the challenge there is that essentially, everybody that owns a home in our Outer Banks could say the same thing, so we have not allowed that. I did want to bring that to the board's attention, just as a, to see if you all wanted to have discussion, but at this point, we've not made that exception at the staff level either. We feel like that is not the intent of our business reentry permit process, and that it would essentially open up Pandora's box. So I'm welcome to have, for the board to have any discussion, but right now, that's where, how staff is acting with that issue.
I do have one question then, Ben. Let's say that they have a minor fire, or they have a flooding issue, and something ruptures in their whole upstairs, it's flooding. If it's an emergency situation like that, is that going to be taken into consideration, let them in? If there's proof of that or something? I mean, because, I mean, obviously, if they got a ruptured water heater or something, the water's flowing, they ought to be able to get in and shut the water off.
I think that, like I said, obviously, I'm giving you an exceptional case. How about, that's probably a better idea.
I'm just curious, if something like it happens, I mean, that's...
We've, we've had a couple instances where there were actually people who sold their home, their actual residency, and closed on it, were getting ready to come here two days later, and the restrictions were in place. We've made, I think, three exceptions for folks who, and they could prove us with a bill of sale and closing documents that it happened. If somebody had a fire, you know, obviously, we would know about that through our records. I think that those are some of those really exceptional cases that we could, we could evaluate case by case.
Probably send a staff by or something to verify if there's something actually going on.
And from a water leak standpoint, we could verify that pretty quickly through water meter readings. So I mean, we, we have a way to verify both of those situations. We did have one issue as an example. A gentleman said that his vinyl fence that was around his pool had fallen over. We didn't make an exception to allow him to come fix it. We did offer to have a public safety employee go by and check to see if it had actually fallen over to that extent, and if there's some way to just secure it for the time being, because hopefully, this, this restriction is not going to go out, you know, for an indefinite period of time, which is another discussion that I think we can get into after I answer any questions that you all may have about exceptions to our regulations and how staff has kind of viewed that.
Ben, if, if I could add, and like I said, with my background at the sheriff's department, being a sergeant there, as far as working the checkpoint, we've had one where somebody came there, and the guy had a contractor coming to fix some damage, like Commissioner Payment said, and we physically allowed that guy to go, and the homeowner was in the passenger vehicle, somebody had to come pick him up. He couldn't go, he lived in Chesapeake. But, you know, we've done that, where they've had somebody go work on their house, and they had, you know, it was a Currituck resident, and that's one thing, like, we get that question a lot, and the sheriff touched on it a little bit before he left. If your driver's license says Currituck County, if it's Moayok, if it's Charboro, if it's Barco, Coinjock, I live wherever in Currituck County, or if it's a Dare County address, at the checkpoint at the bridge, which is Dare and Currituck, checking to see who can come by, or if they have a permit, they, you know, if they work at Harris Teeter, they have a pay stub, they have a name tag, they have all their stuff, they're in their uniform. So I mean, like I said, if you're Joe Johnson from Hampton, and, you know, you just said that, you're, you know, you're not coming through. So I mean, just to kind of clear that up for people, because we get that question, I got 10 of them today. So just like, if your driver's license doesn't say Currituck Township in Currituck, or Currituck County, or Dare, you're not going through the bridge. So I mean, we turned away probably 50 people today.
Yeah, the, like Commissioner McCord was saying, there's a couple of reasons folks can go through that checkpoint. They have proof of ownership of, or not proof of ownership, proof of residency, of property in the Outer Banks. They have proof of residency in Currituck County, and the reason for that is a lot of our folks do their grocery shopping, medical appointments, pharmacy, you know, their daily life is interacting with the Outer Banks. And then if you're going to work, if you have a pass as, from a business, and we issue these passes to the businesses, the business fills it out, signs it says, "This person works for me," those folks are allowed travel back and forth.
And those passes, too, be noted, those passes can't be shared. So if I am friends with Owen, and I go there, and it says Owen Etheridge on my pass, I'm looking at that guy's ID, and it says Kevin McCord, I'm not getting in.
That's right.
So I mean, the passes are checked with the names, just, just to kind of put that out there for everybody, so they know who can get across and who can't, because they've tried numerous types of ways.
It's important to note, we've had a lot of people say that, oh, they're getting in, they're getting in, they're getting in, and, and most of them were here before we put this restriction in place, and I think it's, that the sheriff's department's doing their job.
Yeah, and Dare County as well, too. Dare's, I mean, like I said, and Southern Shores has helped, and Kitty Hawk, the guys down there, the bridge, there's five, four to six guys there all day long, 24/7, and, you know, and it's, and everybody's getting it, there's signs, you know, as far as the distancing, people aren't rolling their windows down, they're putting their ID up there, you can look at it, you look at the, the permit to see if they match, to see the pay stub. I mean, I've had them on the phone, and the guy's name's Ken, and it says Ken Jones, or whatever, on his email of his pay stub. So I mean, they're, the ones that are coming through daily for required, that need to be there, they get it, and it, and it's working. But the ones that are trying to beat it, it's, you know, and I mean, I sympathize for them, I understand, but like I said, I just wanted people to know that, you know, if you don't have one of those two things, you're not, you're not going across that bridge.
Well, then, that brings a question, then. I'm going to use my business for an example. My business is located in Currituck County. I have work vans with my company logo on it. I have customers in Corolla. I don't have a work pass stapled to my van. As long as, as long as my workers have the Currituck driver's license...
Yeah, they have the Currituck County driver's license, they're getting through.
They're going to get through to take care of my customers.
And you guys aren't really, if you, if you look like you have business, in that case, that you are on a legitimate business trip.
Yeah, and the Dare guy, and a lot of the Dare sheriff's guys, as well as us, you know, we know the guys that are pulling up, that, that are coming through there, that you see that same truck of, you know, being a septic, island septic, being the different guys, that that's, you know, every day, they see those vehicles going back and forth. You know, those guys, but those guys are still showing their IDs and stuff. I mean, they get it, just using that company as an example.
And I do want to emphasize, any company that has employees, not just for this situation, I'd encourage you to come get the blue reentry permit, because in the case of our major storm event, which we have fairly frequently, if your employee didn't have a Currituck County address, that'd be the way they'd get in.
Luckily, all mine do.
But, but yeah, all, all those businesses, I mean, I'd encourage you, come by, it's very painless to pick those up. You can call emergency management, they send you a form, you fill it out, you tell us how many you need, you assign those to individual employees, so that when they come through the checkpoint...
The name matches, the permit matches, the driver's license, or...
Okay. Well, they, that being said, the county, they're still going to be able to come in to get that, or buy, or...
Buy a point.
...will set up an appointment for them, I assume, to pick those up?
The way that emergency management does it, emergency management is going to be staffed with a person during regular business hours throughout the, this whole event, no matter how long it rolls out. What they do is they call in, we send them the form electronically, they can either scan it or fax it back to us. We get their permits together. When they get here, they call us, and we just walk it out to the car.
Okay.
And it's up to them to fill it out. If, my understanding is if the sheriff's office sees these cards that aren't filled out, the person has to get it filled out and sign to buy the business owner.
We've turned them around if they weren't filled out properly.
Okay.
I got a lot of questions yesterday from people in Knott's Island going over to the beach for recreational purposes. The theory is, if a golf course can remain open, why can't they go over and walk on the beach or be on the beach?
That's a question I wish the sheriff was still here for, but mine is...
As far as recreation, if you look on the governor's order, if you look on it, there's, there's different things on recreation. If me and Bob wanted to go fishing, and we're going to go out there fishing for food for dinner, that, I mean, that, that would, would qualify, you could be out in the sound, or be out in the ocean, whatever. I mean, there are some stipulations. I mean, like I said, everybody can view the, the governor's order, and, I mean, I was one of the, I was the guy. Me and myself and Sergeant Bray were the two guys out there at the boat at the entrance in Caroosa yesterday, and we turned away 24 people.
What were the instances for most of them?
Most of them lived in Virginia Beach, and they were just coming over there. You know, we were looking for luggage, we were looking to see if somebody was trying to smuggle somebody in, because I was told from multiple realtors that the Real Estate Commission was fining any realtor or realty company, I want to say it was $50,000, if they were trying to sneak somebody in to rent a property. So we were looking for, I mean, literally, people with luggage. I mean, we had a lot of fishermen, they might have had Virginia boats, but they were fishing the canals, we watched them. We had a lot of, everybody pretty much, like I said, complied, I mean, we checked IDs, and everybody, you know, they understood, and, you know, they were property owners. There was, like I said, I think we turned away six boats yesterday and two today.
So if somebody in Corolla wants to go on the beach and just walk around, they can do that?
It would fall into that recreation, so I would say yes. I mean, like I said, they can view the governor's order, I mean, like to his question, I mean, like you said, a golf course, if two guys went out and played, and they didn't ride in the same cart together...
The, Owen, there's a part of your question to address. If they're a Knott's Island resident, I believe the sheriff's office would let them go over, because they could go over there.
Yeah, they could go over there.
Because they could go to the checkpoint. But if it is a person who is launching a boat from Knott's Island, but is not a Currituck resident, then you get into some different situations.
We stopped two of those yesterday, too.
Supposedly, I was told that some Knott's Island people were turned around. I said, I find that hard to...
Nobody from, I was there yesterday, nobody from Knott's Island was turned around. I was there the, the entire, the entire time, nobody from Knott's, and nobody from Knott's Island was turned around to date, neither.
Unless they had somebody from out of state with them.
Yeah, I mean, there was one where they had somebody else where, you know, I told them, they, you know, they couldn't go, and, you know, like you said, I mean, and there was one with an exception. You know, they had a washer and dryer, we followed them, they had a washer and dryer, it was dropped off on the land, and most of them were Knott's Island people, a couple weren't, and then they came right back. You know, so I mean, like I said, there was, you know, sympathetic, somebody had to load a washer and dryer on a boat, and they were pretty, pretty big heavy unit, so, but that was, that was it.
Commissioner Payment, to get to your question, and this is important for people to understand, those recreation activities are available to people, but if they start to violate the governor's orders and the guidelines put forward by even the federal government at this point, and they start to not practice social distancing, and they start to gather at these places, there are communities in North Carolina that have closed beaches, because the beaches have gotten too full. I think Oak Island did it today. So there is a, I mean, if people are not responsible, then, then governments have responded by saying, if you can't follow these guidelines and do it responsibly, then we have to take, you know, we have to, we have to put a rule in place, so that we have to enforce something. Luckily, I haven't heard any issues of that on our beaches, but I do know there are some communities who have taken that step.
There was a picture taken yesterday of quite a large mass gathering over, I think just south of Caroosa.
And if, and if there are large gatherings, and this is important to, to kind of reiterate, if folks have concerns that something's happening that shouldn't be happening, they can contact the non-emergency number for communications, and I'll look that up and give that here in a second.
It's 232-2216, or if you can't remember that, write it down. I always tell people, 232-2424. It's open 24 hours a day, twice. 232-2424 is the easiest number to remember.
So if they call that, then they would then refer that to the sheriff's office, dispatch a sheriff's deputy, and they will go investigate any concerns that people have. So if you think something's going on, don't post a picture to Facebook, call the... So, if you think something's going on, don't post a picture to Facebook, call the non-emergency number and we'll investigate it.
I think we all got an email from up in Corolla that there were a lot of people gathering around Wellhead and all that.
So, the, the question becomes, what's the definition of a mass gathering? And so, if you've got pockets of less than 10 people at a park on the beach, I don't know that that would violate, and once again, I'm not trying to speak for the sheriff. Ultimately, law enforcement has to make that determination, but I think, I think that what it comes down to is is it a mass gathering or is it small pockets of people in public spaces? And that's, that's the hard thing to figure out. I mean, we're all kind of in unprecedented ground right now. These are rules that none of us have ever had to really enforce or live through, and so we're taking it kind of on a day-by-day, case-by-case basis.
Okay.
All right, the, um, the next thing that I felt like the board needed to discuss, Dare County adjusted their restrictions and put a, a end date on it of April 30th. That matches the governor's recommendation for his stay-at-home order, and so I wanted to put it before the Board of Commissioners tonight. If we wanted to essentially add that to our order with the understanding that it would be under constant monitoring, meaning if things get better quicker, it could be moved earlier, or, and in my opinion, what could be likely, if things don't improve at a rapid rate, then it could be extended. But I think it at least gives those non-resident property owners and visitors some, at least a point to say, okay, this is the potential date that it could change, understanding that it is a very fluid situation. One of the reasons that we did not put a date on it to start with, and I believe why Dare County didn't either, it has been such a fluid situation that the way that everything changes, it, it would have just been a shot in the dark. And now we've got some guidelines that have come out from the state government and from the federal government about the end of April, and so I, I think it makes sense to kind of set that as our, as our benchmark for right now.
Does anyone have a problem with, looking at April 30th as a?
As our target date?
As a target date?
No, it's fine with me. I will, we're consistent then.
I mean, hope it just comes early.
If we, if, I mean, if we, our, our next meeting, next scheduled meeting is the 20th, so would we be able to like look at that date on the 20th and?
Certainly. So, there's, there's a couple of things, if, if on the 20th, we can look at that date and decide if, if it needs to push further out. And if something miraculous happens and the date could come closer in, we could always do a called meeting like this meeting where we give two days' notice and get folks together to have, to do that, or, I mean, the chairman even can make that change, you know, for the board. But I think April 20th is what I was going to propose as a date to tentatively look at that, if the situation continues on the path that most, um, most of the infectious disease experts think that it will.
Okay. So, it's like we're looking for the 30th right this moment.
The next thing for the work session, we've gotten some guidance from the School of Government and from the state of North Carolina about remote participation in meetings. Obviously, this is not the way that we prefer to conduct business. We'd like for people to be able to come in here and hear, you know, be, be physically present whenever we are discussing the business of the citizens. But there is also a potential that each of you individuals could either have exposure as a commissioner or have symptoms as commissioners, but there would be important business that would need to be conducted. And while you might not be critically ill, it would not be advisable for you to come into a gathering such as this. For that purpose, you have an individual local rule that is set, and I'll let Ike get into it, that limits remote participation in meetings for commissioners. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the county attorney.
Yeah, first of all, understand that it is, it is not clear that boards of county commissioners are authorized to have remote meetings to begin with, and so I think the best advice is unless you really need to have a remote meeting where you all are not physically together in a meeting, it's probably best to try to avoid it. But having said that, um, the School of Government and some others are starting to come around to in recognition of what is occurring today and what we're going through, that, uh, that remote meetings may well be necessary. But that do not have a remote meeting if it involves a quasi-judicial matter, certainly because of due process issues. The, the other aspect of that is to remember logistically what would be required in order for you all to meet remotely, where some or all of you are not together in a room. Um, and so you would need to have the ability for those commissioners who are not physically present, or if none of you are, to be electronically connected in such a way that you could, of course, adequately hear one another, um, to be able to have the public electronically connected to you so that they could hear and interact to the extent that might be necessary depending on the issue that you are considering. And then you start thinking about, well, how are you going to deal with issues where if it's planning and there's some plans or plaits or whatnot that need to be viewed and discussed, and how do you, each of you see that along with the public being able to see that and comment on it during the course of what would might be a public hearing remotely? So, though, that, that's why it's probably best to not have a remote meeting, but that if we do, that we may be limited to those essential matters that the board might need to, to act upon. Um, now, as Ben alluded to, your, uh, county code of ordinances prohibits, in your rule, your rules of procedure prohibits a county commissioner from participating or voting in a meeting unless physically present. And then likewise, if you were to consider to allow for your advisory boards to meet during this time, there's, there's a similar prohibition on advisory board members participating in a meeting unless they are physically present in the meeting as well. So, in case you want to, not that you have to do it, but hold the remote meeting, but in case you want to have the ability to, I've drafted an ordinance or ordinance language to amend those two sections of the code of ordinances that would, would provide as following, that except during a state of emergency declared under chapter 166A of the general statutes of North Carolina, a board member must be physically present at a regular or special meeting to participate or vote in the meeting. And so, what we are currently under is a state of emergency that's been enacted under chapter 166A of the general statutes, and such an amendment would allow for a board member to participate in a meeting although they may not be physically present, uh, in the meeting room. So, um, if you want to do that, then that, that is something that you could take care of today so long as it's a unanimous vote. I'd be glad to answer any questions or entertain any discussion with you about the, the logistics and the, the consequence of a remote meeting.
So, right now, as it stands, you have not, this would not affect our, our advisory boards? Or is the advisory board?
Well, there, there's two different sections, but the language would be the same, so that if you were to adopt the ordinance that I've drafted, it would amend two sections of your code of ordinances that would A, allow for the board of commissioners, or a member of the board of commissioners to participate in a meeting remotely, and then B, the second part of the ordinance would allow for an advisory board member to participate in a board meeting of their, of their advisory board remotely, um, in these circumstances.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask the county attorney, is there any minimum or a maximum number, say there was five of us could be here and two guys remotely, or, I mean, is that something that with the state of mercy that we would decide on that number?
Uh, that would, that would, that would be determinative if you were a city council. There is no such specific requirement that there be a certain number physically present in the room together with others participating remotely, so conceivably, uh, as long as you had, so long as you had a quorum that's participating, you could be some remotely, some here in this room, or all remotely, or all in this room.
I would think if we do that, then we need to have a caveat in there that, um, if you're physically able to attend the meeting, you must attend, you know, that you need to be because of illness or some other.
I would suggest we not even go there, just leave things like they are.
For now until the 30th. I kind of agree with Owen.
But how about if somebody gets sick?
Right, the problem is.
You pass the ordinance, you need unanimous.
Come down with this.
Right.
And if you're being quarantined, you might physically could get there, but you shouldn't.
Well, you're quarantined, there's some other reason you cannot attend.
But we have meetings where people are absent.
Yeah, as long as you have a quorum, if somebody gets sick or something, you should get a quorum.
Well, this is, that's what this is about, is if you can't meet a quorum, that's the bigger caveat, the bigger side of this, if you, if you can't have a quorum because three or four of us are down, then you can't function.
Who's going to say we're in our right mind?
You may not be able to function on a live meeting either.
But it could be like my husband could be sick.
Right.
And I shouldn't come out or, you know.
Yeah, because you could, yeah.
Right, so.
I mean, is that something we could touch on on the 20th? I mean, which is what?
We can.
21 days.
I mean, I think it's something we could definitely reevaluate on the 20th. I think that, um, there obviously are, are concerns about remote meetings, which is why the state prior to this had not encouraged that.
Well, it's just, again, it's still not encouraged and still not clear that it, that it is allowed, but.
Well, last week on the call with Speaker Moore, the feeling was we couldn't do it. And then I see where Josh Stein came out and said, well, yeah, I think you can.
And, and the Attorney General did, did, did issue a letter from his office last week, but it is not an official opinion of the Attorney General.
Well, I would just say, we had a Alamo Regional Health meeting, we did it by Zoom meeting with the board members, and we had all sorts, it'd be, we had people losing internet connections, meetings were dropped off, it was, it was a fiasco that.
We're not going Facebook Live it, are we?
All right, well, then it seems to me we just don't, we don't go there just yet.
Maybe discuss it on the 20th.
We haven't risen to that level yet of, of consideration, so.
The only thing I worry about with it being the ordinance, it would have to pass unanimous.
Right.
And so, if one starts getting sick and somebody else starts getting sick, it would take two meetings before you could pass it, and you might have some business that we needed to make decisions on. So, I think it would be a, we're not doing it for any, it's under a state of emergency that we would be doing it.
And we don't know what's going to happen in the next few weeks. I mean, right now, you know, I think we're all fairly confident that Currituck's isolated, but it seems how quickly it spreads is alarming, and if we had something in place, like Kitty said, it is just a state of emergency, it's not like remote calls are going to be the norm. I think we're living in extraordinary times and who's to say what's going to happen by the 20th? And, you know, if we're not together on the 20th and we can't do anything the 20th because we don't have seven of us, I just think it might be prudent to go.
We couldn't do it tonight anyway.
We can add it to the agenda this evening, have further discussion on it at 6 o'clock at a regular meeting and, um, vote on it then if we want to, or not, and this case may be, but, um, it seems like it's worthy of more consideration in our, in our meeting and.
What's the minimum, is there, is the minimum number that have to attend a regular meeting is four, correct?
Four.
Or is your quorum, yes.
Okay. I mean, like you said, you could have four go down, or three spouses and one go down.
Right, there's, there's, yeah, there's, certainly now there's, could be extenuating circumstances pretty quickly.
I understand, hopefully, I heard, uh, coming here today that the increase, daily increase by the CDC is decreasing.
Right, it's starting to dampen a little bit.
It's starting to dampen down a little bit, so.
Yep. Yep, starting to flat. Okay. So, um, if everybody's okay with it, I'll put this, we'll, we'll move to amend our regular meeting agenda and we reconvene for that and have more discussion on remote access to the meetings. All right.
Other than that, at the manager's report at the 6 o'clock meeting, I'm going to go through operationally how each of our departments are going to function under the new guidelines of limiting or promoting telework, but I wanted to leave a little bit of time here for any questions that the board might have had from either, either personally or from the community that have not been answered yet. So, we've got, um, myself and the county attorney here, I'm pretty confident we can answer most of the questions. So, I'd, I'd open that up to the board if, if you all just have anything that folks are curious about, be happy to answer that.
I have heard that in some businesses, there are a lot of people that they're all gathering around each other and they're not keeping the six feet apart. Maybe if we could emphasize that more with our businesses, that, you know, if you see people going up talking to somebody else, that somehow to let people know that you need to keep six feet apart.
The, the businesses that I've heard of have delineated actually on the floor, a six-foot distance.
Dollar General.
At least the grocery stores and the places that are, that are really.
Well, the ABC board just did that today at their store, so.
11 at Barco's got, you don't get to, to the cash register that close.
Yeah, um, uh, the Ace Hardware and Granny.
They have the Plexiglas.
Has got Plexiglas and Ben. So, I think a lot of businesses are coming around, I think the governor's order has helped a lot of that, um, but, but we can certainly reach out through, um, through the various, you know, email groups that we have and remind businesses of what the best practices are. And, and we continue to put up information, and, and this is important, I'd like for the, the community to hear this and for the board to kind of put this information out to the community. We are putting a ton of information through our Facebook page and on our webpage. The easiest way to access it is through the Currituck County Government Facebook page. So, I'd encourage anybody who's on social media and uses that as a source of information, you know, find our page, like our page. If you are in a group, you know, I know we've got a lot of individual community groups in our county, you know, have an administrator who likes our page and can push that information, and I'd encourage you all as, as commissioners to, you know, any posts that we put out, push them to those groups if you're members. I think we're, we're, not only are we putting out information about COVID-19, but also about the recovery programs that are coming into place. So, you're, there's information out there about the new unemployment rules that have come out, about small business relief that's come out, about the text for food that's come out, 211, that kind of thing.
Is the same stuff, uh, because I've had some elderly ask, they are not on social media, Facebook or Instagram, is the same, pretty much, I, I've looked on the county website today, but a lot of the same stuff is on the county website as well.
A lot of it's on the county website, yes, sir.
Google Currituck County.
Yep, and we, um, our, our banner now, the very first thing you're going to see is a link to be able to access COVID-19 information. Uh, there's also a video, um, that the chairman put together. We're going to start to do something, hopefully on a weekly basis. The way that we did it this week is I asked for all of the board to kind of sign off on, on that video. Um, I would look to the board now, if you all are comfortable giving the chairman that authority, it makes that process, it helps us speed up the time in which we can roll out those informational videos for the public. So, I was just wondering if, if the board was comfortable with that, letting the chairman have that authority.
I think that's one thing, the more information we can get out, the more that the chairman or county manager, the county attorney can get out and reassure people, the better people will feel about what's going on. Sometimes if they don't hear anything, they think we're trying to hide something.
Yeah, the, the video was very informative.
So, if you are comfortable, if letting the chairman approve those, that, that makes that process go quicker.
This is, and, and Ben and the staff are the ones that came, mostly Ben, I guess, and then he and I sat down and changed a couple of things for me specifically, but that was stuff that Ben put together, not myself, so, um, I think that's what Ben's looking to do, is, is compile this information and just have me be the face of it.
The other thing too, they can, like you said, they can look at the sheriff's office page, the Facebook page, there's a ton of information on there, they put a long post today on the different stuff because of the questions. I had probably 60 public service calls today.
And I think the chamber has been real good about getting information.
They've put a lot in there too.
Telling people how to get help.
They are, uh, they're, they're working on that. Um, my wife actually spoke with Juanita Kraus today, and I'm supposed to call over tomorrow morning to talk about SBA stuff. They're compiling that data for our businesses here and, um, going to help navigate that, and so I'm, I'll be calling over tomorrow to talk to them, see where they're at, and I'll put some more information out, and, uh, of course, the county will be doing it as, as well as economic development for us, working in conjunction to get that information out to people. It's, it's going to be hard to navigate as it is, so, have all the help they can.
And a lot of the information they've been putting out, I know there was one about restaurant workers. I share that with other people, so the more information you can get out, the better people will feel.
Okay.
Two things that I've been asked several times. One, why don't we limit the number of people that can go in the food line? And secondly, why aren't we stopping people at the state line without a state license tags?
So, um. So, um.
Suggested on the license tags, we still have a lot of people that moved into the county recently who might still have their out-of-state license tags.
You have a lot of military.
Driver's license.
You have a lot of military.
So, um, look, I'll take the, the first question, um, why don't we limit the number of people that can go into a business? I think that, I think that we, some businesses have done that, um, and are doing, and if a business wants to do that, I think that's appropriate for that business. I think that's a decision that, as a county manager, I would recommend to the board to leave that up business by business, because it could be very different, you know, uh, uh, for instance, uh, auto parts store might be very comfortable saying only three people in at a time. Whereas food line, you just can't, I mean, people have to go in and get food. And if you start to limit the number of people that can get in, what's going to happen, a place like food line, you're going to have people that line up outside and it just, but I think.
We're not a police state yet.
Yeah, we leave that up business by business. As far as the.
Say, yeah.
As, as, as far as the state line question, I think, I think people need to understand why the restrictions to the outer banks are in place. They're, once again, they're not in place to keep people from coming in and turn around and leaving. They're there because if they come there and they stay there and they get sick, the medical infrastructure isn't there. People who are in our county and maybe are from other states that are in, say, Moayoc or Grandy, or even, even though it's just right around, but for our outer banks, it's a long ways from Powell's Point all the way around to Corolla. There's a much shorter trip time to get there. There's also a more robust EMS, um, staff on the mainland as opposed to what exists in the outer bank. So I don't know what, what we would be achieving from doing that. Now, there are states, Rhode Island, for example, has started to restrict not entry, but they're really monitoring entry from people from New York. I think that, that a state line, something done at that level needs to come from the governor's office, not from local government.
We have goods and services moving in and out. I mean, there's people that maybe work down here that are from Virginia, there's a whole myriad of reasons why we wouldn't.
It'd be a logistical nightmare.
It, it would, and like I said, I think, I mean, and also, I mean, I want people to understand, we have a sheriff's office. We do not have municipalities in Currituck County. We have a sheriff's office that provides all the law enforcement, minus highway patrol and wildlife resources.
Three troopers right now, we mon, we monitor all the, we, uh, we do recs, we do it all.
Yeah, so we, I mean, the other thing is people say, why don't we cut off all access into the, well, do you do shortcut road? Do you do Virginia? I mean, some, you don't have the manpower.
There's eight entrances that they can get in north of Coin Job.
And, and it achieves nothing. Like I said, the reason for the outer banks, it achieves, it keeps people safe who were, who think they would be safe there. Because they, if this gets to a certain level, our response time will be impacted because we're having to take every ICU case all the way around. And there's a potential you have a lot more ICU cases than we normally have even in the summertime. So that's, that's the, that's how I'd answer that, that question and concern.
Anything further from the board? All right, well, at this time, then we'll adjourn our, uh, work session, and we'll reconvene here in a few minutes for the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you. Thank you, welcome back, everybody. Um, I'm going to, uh, call the meeting to order for the Monday, March thirtieth, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, at this time, uh, I would ask Commissioner Beaumont if you would lead us into invocation and pledge of allegiance before we get into the business.
Heavenly Father, I ask you to bless this evening's meeting. Father, and, uh, grant wisdom to us, this Board of Commissioners, in times as this county has never seen before. Father, I pray that you would give us the insight and the understanding to govern with wisdom, with, um, the measures that are necessary, but only those that are necessary. Father, bless this evening, bless each and every one of us. Lord, I cry out to you for the health of all Currituck County residents. And I pray that this virus would, uh, quickly dissipate and its effects upon our county would be minimized. Lord, bless this evening in Jesus' name. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Beaumont. Going to have a few changes to the agenda, I'm going to move to change the agenda and invert the commissioner report and county manager's report. So the county manager will go first, we will go second. And then lastly, add an agenda item, um, under new business, consideration of an amendment to the code of ordinances to allow for virtual meetings.
For approval.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first thing I'd like to bring up before the board for the six o'clock meeting for, uh, action item is, if you remember at our last meeting, we, for thirty days, we essentially canceled all events. We did a lot of things for thirty days. I'd like to extend that to April thirtieth, um, based on the conversation that we had here at our five o'clock work session. As a reference, that's all county facilities are, um, shut down for public events. All events on county property are shut down, all county events are canceled. The only exception of that I'd recommend would be the drive-through rabies clinic. The only, the reason for that is that obviously we still need to maintain rabies vaccinations, and we can do that without anybody getting out of a vehicle, essentially same the way that drive-through restaurants are working currently. So I would recommend that we move all of those measures to April thirtieth. And then I'll also have operationally what each department's going to do for telework, but I'd look to the board for approval to push that to April thirtieth, and we can evaluate on April twentieth if we need to.
Okay. I don't know that we need a motion, just your approval to extend to, we don't need, yeah, because it's.
Okay. All right.
Does everyone go with moving the state of emergency?
And, and leave the drive-through rabies?
Leave the drive-through.
Drive-through rabies, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you. Okay.
So I'm going to go through each department operationally, how we're going to be maximizing our telework and remote operations, what those employees that can't telework are going to be working on. I, I believe we found a way for almost all department, except for one, for employees to be, um, employed in some kind of task that, um, is still important to the county. And I'll go through that as we get to some of those departments that are outside of their usual duties. Parks and Recreation is first. They are going to be focusing, uh, their staff on some construction projects they have ongoing, as well as landscaping projects. They took on most of, or all of the landscaping at the, uh, at the Maple Park, at our community park out there. So they're going to be getting that up, um, up to speed. There's probably roughly three weeks of full work for all of those folks to be able to work. And then at that point, they would go, um, three days a week to doing just landscaping. And then two days a week, those folks that are doing the landscaping would shift to be public works helpers, basically. And so we would use them in that capacity. So they would be public works employees then, doing minor maintenance on facilities. You all have heard from public works about how they need the manpower, so this potentially is a way to, to get them some help to get ahead of the curve. And the library would, would provide an employee at each branch on the mainland every day. It's not going to be open to the public, but they have got, they actually have had a lot of usage for the digital library to, going up. And part of that is if you have a late fee or a lost book, they have to clear that out of the account and out of the system, and you can't do that remotely. So we'll need two employees, one at each of those branches. The rest of the employ, and they'll rotate every week, so every week a different employee will be there, which gives some downtime to the library on Saturday and Sunday. It'll be cleaned by this employee before they leave on Friday. And those that are not working physically there, the remote work there is limited. However, our library director has advised me that there is a lot of opportunity for, um, personal development or professional development for the folks that work in the library. There's a lot of train-the-trainer type classes that they have not been able to do, because they do run kind of short-staffed, and we were very efficient in our workforce. Those are things like, um, getting training so that you can help people learn how to do job interviews better, resume building better, a lot of life skill type things, and that's kind of the focus that libraries are shifting to as people come in there. And on the backside of, uh, of this, I think, from an economic development standpoint, being able to provide those trainings to people is going to be crucial. So I think that, she said she's very comfortable that they've got at least thirty days worth of professional development that those employees can do. It's basically three weeks, because one week they'll be at the branch. Uh, engineering will shift and work completely remotely unless they have to go to the field, to one of the projects that they're working on. Everything that they do can be done digitally. If somebody needed to meet with engineering, there's still going to be somebody answering a phone remotely, and if you needed to send an appointment, you could do that. And if you need to have them meet you in the field for something, that would happen as well. Cooperative extension will essentially close their building, but their staff will still work remotely. Some of their staff would work to develop and produce some of the videos that you've seen them putting out on a daily basis. And then the rest of the staff would be doing field operations where they're actually visiting farms and helping farmers. The only person there that would, um, that we will have to have help at, probably the rural center, is the custodial staff there will have to shift to the rural center. They've got enough outdoor maintenance, landscaping, that kind of thing, that they should be able to keep an extra person busy there. At our airport, the airport manager will continue to staff the FBO during the week. The part-time employees there will work outside, it's grass cutting season, there's a lot of grass to cut at the airport. Um, if it's bad weather, the part-time employees there will have to stay home. And so, you know, they will stay home without pay. Whenever they have to stay home because of bad weather, there's just nothing internal to do at the airport.
Well, that'd be a normal case, wouldn't it?
Well, normally they'll help man the FBO.
Okay.
Um, I will say that I think all of our airport linemen fall into some form of a high-risk category, so we're not really comfortable having them in the building, but I, I fully anticipate that they'll be comfortable with that most. It's a part-time job, most of those folks, actually, I think all of them are retired.
Everybody's retired, I believe.
Um, DSS, right now, everyone is teleworking except for eleven employees. The DSS director believes that they could get that down to essentially three employees in the building. It would be, uh, a manager, an income caseworker, income maintenance caseworker, and a clerical staff member, and they would rotate that through on a weekly basis where they can. But everybody else would be remote, so they can do all of their work remotely. Planning would essentially be one person in the building, uh, it would probably either be the planning director, assistant planning director. The rest of the folks are going to work remotely. When I'm talking about this, I'm proposing to start, start it either Tuesday or Wednesday, depending on the department and how quickly they can implement it. Finance can essentially all work remotely, except for occasional trips to the office to be able to, um, someone will have to come in and, you know, check mail, check invoices. Some people are going to have to come in and get paperwork to do, but they can come in, get their stuff, and then go back to their home and work from there. The Register of Deeds is proposing to shift to one employee in the office and rotate it on a weekly basis. So every week there'd be a different employee in the Register of Deeds office. The, the tax office would do the same thing, it would be closed to the public because the things that the tax office has to do are typically things that come through the Register of Deeds. So the Register of Deeds, they have one person in the office at a time to record a deed or, uh, for marriage license, birth certificates, that kind of thing. It's something that needs to go to tax, there would always be an employee, probably, um, the deputy tax collector there to sign off on any documents that need to be signed off on. Elections would do a one employee in the office that rotates through each week. Inspections would be in the field, the inspectors will be working as usual, but not reporting to the office. And there will be two staff members actually working out of the office, probably our, um, chief building inspector and a, um, potentially a permit officer, in case there's some complicated permits. But online permits has been going pretty well. I really appreciate the folks, and that was a big transition for a lot of folks, but they've really worked with us, so I appreciate that. Um, HR can essentially telework most days, except whenever they have an orientation on Tuesday, and the HR director would come into the office on Friday for things that have to be for signatures and things that have to be signed off on. Obviously, if we have an employee in crisis, they can be here much quicker. Senior Services is the one where we're struggling to find, um, some, some things for those folks to do. We've got three employees there who are going to be delivering home-delivered meals Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. There's about twenty hours a week that they do not, they will not have something to do. We do have, of the three of them, two of them are comfortable taking sick time for the duration of this, which is time that they've accrued in their service to Currituck County. We have one that doesn't want to take sick time, they have had a request in to have that building painted. Um, so we're going to take that one employee and let him paint the interior of the building. So it needs to be done, it's man, you know, it's, it's manpower, they've got time, and, you know, a gallon of paint's not too expensive. It's a lot cheaper to do it that way than it is to hire a paint crew to come in, so. Finally, and I, there's some, and I'll get to the departments I haven't really listed. Tourism, essentially, will be going, they'll be going to telework except for, um, an employee at the Welcome Center to answer phone calls, and an employee at the, um, Corolla Welcome Center to answer phone calls. The one at the, at our main Welcome Center would be answering the phone calls that we're getting through emergency management. They've been staffing our call center. And the one in Corolla would actually be the main tourism line. So if somebody had a question, they'll be able to do that. There probably will be the same two employees for both of those. Those two employees don't have anything really that they can telework with, so that, that's our anticipation there. County manager's office, I'll be here every day, your clerk and, uh, Sam will be teleworking mainly, except when they need to come in to pick something up. From a legal department, the county attorney will be in and out as needed. His staff, our purchasing agent and paralegal would be remotely working. Obviously, there are some, our two biggest departments, we've got several big departments I did not list in there. Our sheriff's office, our EMS, our fire, our communications, um, and our emergency management group. These are folks that are critical and do not have the option to not come to work in a current crisis, really ever, but especially in the current crisis that we're facing. As well as our utilities department, they can't make a decision not to come in either. So they will be working as usual. We are taking guidelines on all of those departments to try to minimize risk. Um, EMS is doing temperature checks before somebody checks on each shift. If they have a temperature, then they have to go home. We receive guidelines from Alamo Regional Health Services that you have to be symptom-free for seventy-two hours before you can return to work. Uh, the sheriff's office is doing the same thing with temperature checks. Utilities, we've split shifts, so we have, we've gone to, um, our water treatment operators and sewer operators are not working in the same groups, so that, we've got one group that's working together and another group that's working together, so that if somebody gets sick, they haven't contaminated the other group. Communications is doing some stuff with the backup center, um, so that they can split up and doing, you know, new sanitizing protocols, that kind of thing. Emergency management is going to have somebody here and somebody working from home, but your emergency manager, Mary Beth Noons, who's done a phenomenal job through this whole thing, uh, is going to be here every day, so. Those are, those are most of the departments, the only one I didn't get a chance to touch base with today, and I just ran on time, was soil and water conservation, as you all are aware, they fall under the authority of the soil and water supervisors, so that really is up to them, and I didn't talk to the, the clerk of court, but their work is.
They're doing, the clerk of court, they're shifting out.
Yeah, and it, but theirs is dictated by and large from, um.
And believe it or not, they, there's still a decent workload coming in there.
Yeah, yeah. But the operationally, that's how we're going to handle it. I can't do anything else to keep county employees protected. I feel like that that'll, that'll put us at the least amount of risk possible. Most offices, if you need something, if you call, you're, you're going to get somebody that's going to answer the phone. That person may or may not be physically in an office. You know, we've directed staff that, um, they're, to forward their office phones to their personal cell phones. Sam actually gave a example for a voicemail script to change to if you're going to do that. We're going to work the mail a little different, we're making some other internal changes. It'll, I'm, I'm going to be upfront, though, we're doing things that's never been done before, so it's going to have hiccups here and there, bear with us, I'd ask the public to bear with us. We all want to get back to business as usual and business as normal. None of us are, are, you know, enjoy where we're at right now. But I think for the time being, those recommendations that I'm making are the ones that'll keep county employees the safest and keep them working the longest. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have about any of those groups. And if I'm left one out, I apologize, there's a lot of departments there, so.
I have a question, not related to the groups, but with our construction projects going on throughout the county, we at times could have a, quite a group of workers working together on our projects. Do we have any say on that, or is that strictly up to the GC? And are they emphasizing the workloads, the groups that, of construction workers and trades at, at a billing at one time?
Are you talking about county projects or construction in general?
Well, county projects, I know we can't do anything with construction, but any of our county projects going on.
So I, I believe that our engineering department has talked to them about social distancing. I mean, and we've received emails from, the only active projects we have right now currently under construction, we've got something, we were supposed to have a groundbreaking today that got canceled, obviously, but, um, the public safety facility and the Maritime Museum, both of those are the same contractor, and I know that they've reached out to us actually to talk about how they're doing site sanitation. You know, for them, it kind of come, the distancing is different, but job safety is paramount in any construction site, and so they're, they're focusing on that. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that there's, I'm sure if you go to a construction site, though, you're going to see people within six feet of each other. I think that they're being as careful as they can, and they're aware of that situation. As the new projects come online, ABC Store and the Shingle Landing Park, that'll be emphasized to those folks as well.
So if I understand you correctly, you work to try to keep everybody employed here in the county?
I, I, I did everything I could to keep every employee with something meaningful to do.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, and can I ask one thing, what we discussed in the work session far is like, I think you said the senior services, where there was two of them, we're going to take that additional thing, you discussed the, I mean, I know most of them have been there a while, but if there's additional leave through the state of emergency. have been there a while, but if there's additional leave through the state of emergency, that's something that could be available, too, to somebody say that's worked here six months.
So if you remember at the last meeting that you all had, you amended the personnel policy. So if somebody has worked here and they don't have a lot of sick time, or they've had a major medical issue in the last year and it's been depleted, the board approved for those folks to accrue, to use sick time into the negative balance, which is something that, in my time in local government, has never been done. It's being done other places than just here, though. And then when they separate from employment, if they still have a negative balance, any vacation or comp time that they have available would be deducted to cover that, that amount. So, and then as they accrue sick time, they'd have to build out of that negative amount. I don't think, I mean, unless somebody has a serious case of COVID-19, or unless we have folks who are going to have to burn at the senior center through senior services, those are the only ones that I'd anticipate having an issue. But we do allow them right now to burn into the negative numbers, which is, it's an exceptional time. It's not something I would recommend any other time, obviously.
Are we allowing employees to donate sick time to another employee if the case arises?
We have a policy in place that allows that. That's a really interesting question. Right now, the policy's still in place. I can see the pros and, with our current situation, I see the pros and cons of doing it. I think that if somebody had a major, I think what we would say is if you have a major medical issue, we probably would allow it. If you just, you know, if it's just that we're out of work, then I think we have an even different question as a local government entity, not whether or not these people can use sick time, but, I mean, you get into really hard discussions about, you know, furloughs, which nobody wants to do. I've been furloughed in my time in local government when the recession hit in 2007 or 2008 as a planner. I mean, it can happen, but essentially, right now, we've got two employees in our entire staff that we just couldn't find something for them to work on that was meaningful to the citizens of the county. They're willing to take sick time. It's time they've accrued, so I'm comfortable with two. But if this thing stretches out more than another 30 days, then I start having concerns, and, you know, there's going to, there'll be hard conversations that have to be had at that point, I think.
Thank you. Anything further for Ben?
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next item on the agenda this evening is commissioner's report. Obviously, we're in a little different scenario this evening compared to what we normally are, and we had a work session that was televised prior to this meeting tonight. That will be available on our YouTube channel for anyone that wasn't able to see that. One of the areas I think it's important, and we've heard a lot of, for our non-resident property owners, and they're trying to come in as an owner contractor. At this time, we are not going to allow that, because that would basically, anybody could come in and say they're working on their home and act as an owner contractor. However, if there are instances where an individual has something happen, a fire, Commissioner Payman brought up maybe flooding where a water tank popped and they had significant damage to their home, we can look at making allowances for extreme situations. However, just to come in and prep your home for the season and make minor repairs would not fall into that category at this time. We are looking at setting a deadline for April 30th to reopen the Outer Banks. However, that is a moving target at this time with the fluidity of the situation. We do need to, we'll just monitor that, and we'll be having another board meeting, hopefully, our second meeting in April, and we will look at that, at that time and decide if it's still a go. And we are working in concert with Dare County to do that. They have also said that they're looking at the end of April as a time to reopen the Dare County Outer Banks to owners and visitors. I think from the commissioner's side, there's, we need to do as much as we can to refer people to the county website. We talked about that at our work session. They are our best source for information. We, as commissioners, don't necessarily need to get involved in the nuance of these things. It's an interesting place because we're public animals. We go out and we talk to people and they want to know. But I think if we can, if we can stay off of Facebook and engaging in conversation about things other than positive messaging and those sorts of things, and refer people as much as possible to the county, they have the most up-to-date information. We're one or two steps removed from what's going on. For instance, the case in Corolla, or someone said there was a case in Corolla with someone with COVID-19, and that was reported on the newspaper before we even knew what was going on, and we didn't have that information. Even the county didn't have that information. And so, having them put the information out is going to be our best course of action, so that there's no disinformation or inadvertently putting out incorrect information. On a lighter, happier note, the horse fence in Corolla, the cabled portion, has been, the holes have been filled in for the most part over there. All that work has been completed. We did not go out, you will see where it stops if you go over to Corolla or see pictures. There are some open portions, about six pilings left that are out in the ocean, that we could not get a marine contractor in to take care of those and get those pilings drove. However, when the tide's up at a normal pace, the horses can't get out through that anyway. It's the extreme eastern part of it. That has been almost a two-year, probably over two years at this point, journey to get that fixed, and it's just been a lack of ability to get the work done. The economy's been great, which is a good problem to have, so the contractors were not willing to come in and do smaller jobs. They were tied up on big jobs. So we got some local people to take care of that, and we will also begin something you didn't touch on, the portion from the cattle grate to the horse fence. Has that contract been awarded at this time?
I believe the contract's been awarded. Bids have been opened. Contract's been awarded. I think there was a pre-construction meeting. I have to check my notes to see when it's scheduled for, but it should come, it'll commence in the next two to three weeks, for sure.
Okay. So, thank you. So we'll see repairs going from the portion on the beach, from the dune, basically back to the cattle grate, which currently has all kinds of fencing there that's just kind of half-padded, a living place to keep the horses out. We'll be going up in the air another eight to 10 feet on what is existing today. We've received a lot of emails from our non-resident property owners, obviously distraught that they can't get to their property. And I want to say, I understand your plight. My own family owns several properties here. I own a rental property here. I'm losing rental income, and Commissioner Beaumont owns rental property on the Outer Banks. He's losing income. You need to please be patient with us. This is not something we did lightly. It was done out of care and concern for the citizens that are here. The county manager hit on that, that we just simply do not have the medical facilities to deal with the influx of people. It's fine during the summer when it's mostly broken arms and twisted ankles and maybe someone getting sick or food poisoning or more run-of-the-mill things that we would see. We are set up to handle that, but our hospitals are, only have 18, 19 beds, and just no ICU facilities or anything at all. You could potentially travel with it coming down here and not even know you have it and put it into our community. We're coming contacting it. I think an important thing that people are missing is that you want to come from New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Massachusetts. You have to travel all the way down the eastern seaboard. And while you may not have it, you may have come in contact with it on the way down here and bring it with you and potentially expose your family to something that you had not exposed them to. So I think it's very important for people to understand and look at the bigger picture and the spirit and intent of staying at home. So that is another reason that we put this in place. One of the other things I'll address specifically to Corolla and Corova, Commissioner McCord, and we touched on this in our work session, they are up now working at the canals to stop people from coming in from outside the area. They turned away, what, two dozen people Sunday and a few today. So they're monitoring that in response to the complaints that came out. So I want to say thank you to the sheriff's department. They have to sit out on the water, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent weather, and it's not fun to sit out there all day bobbing around telling people no. They're also working diligently at the bridge to stop people. There have been people saying that people coming in from outside the area, and it's just wholeheartedly not true. I think we've seen quite a few people that were here before we put the order in place, and now, as people get bored, they're out driving around that are on the island, and we're looking for people that are not normally here. You can envision, I think county manager put it best, when you buy a new car, if you bought a Subaru, you're going to see a Subaru everywhere. Well, if you're looking for out-of-state plates, you're going to see out-of-state plates everywhere. They are here. A lot of them owned homes and came down before this even happened and decided to stay in place. So I just want to say thank you again to the sheriff's department for all their hard work, extra effort. This is taking away from their normal duties and adding something to them that was not normally there. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The day before I came down here, I saw a picture of the Navy hospital ship, the Comfort, going past the Statue of Liberty. I thought it was one of the most beautiful sights I've seen in a long time. Think it's something that should give us all comfort in what we're going through, and there's no doubt in my mind that we, as Americans, as citizens of Currituck County, we will beat this. This is something that is just a stumbling block for us. There's just so many people to thank here in the county, from the sheriff's department to the people who are EMTs, firemen, the list just goes on and on. There's school people who are delivering food to kids to make sure that they don't go hungry. There's also restaurants that are serving people. There's just so many people to thank. We need to thank our county employees, especially our new county manager, boy, we've just really thrown him out there. Yeah. But thanks to all the county employees who are coming to work, who are doing their best to keep the county open. And we ask that all the public, if you'll just please be patient with us. If you call somebody and you get somebody and you hear a kid screaming in the background, expect it, they're working from home now. So I just want to thank everybody. Make sure you stay safe, and most of all, wash your hands. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Payman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I just reiterate, this is new to the county, the country, and this commissioner board here, and it's, we're doing the best we can to look out for the wellness for everybody in this county and make some good, tough decisions. Again, I do want to thank everybody for their hard work and what everybody's doing out there, but then also, you know, make sure you support your local businesses when you can. I talked to a couple waitresses out there in a couple places, and they were just thankful that they had the opportunity to get a few hours in, because one of them said this is our livelihood, and they're just grateful, and they can appreciate all the support they can get from locals to try to help them through this as well. So everybody's, everybody's doing what they can to survive this, and then again, we'll get through it. And I'm, I was going to touch on a teacher issue, but I think Commissioner Jarvis, I'll let her touch base on that. It was a nice event that took place. And one other thing for the county manager, convenience sites, are we seeing any change in operations with those? Because I do know I've visited a couple of them, and they've had everything wide open. They were pretty much saying, dump it at any place you wanted to in there now. So are they, are they changing operations, or are they just open, wide open? And because the one I went to, they said, you know, if you got recyclables or anything, just pick a dumpster and throw them in them.
We haven't received any notification from Waste Management. Now, we can address it if you'll give me after we get...
Yeah, I just didn't know if something had changed or not with their operations, because it was strange to hear them make comments on that.
Yeah, there are no changes that I'm aware of in their operations. The only thing I will say that we've received notification from Waste Management is that they're just letting us know that there's a potential that their business, just like every business out there, could be impacted by COVID-19, and just giving us a heads up that they're going to do everything they can to continue to provide services no matter what happens, because they understand how important, people kind of forget about trash when they throw it away, but it's important that it ends up where it needs to go at the end of the day. So, but no operational changes to the best of my knowledge.
Thank you, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Beaumont?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Kitty alluded to this, and it's relative to the county, the staff, and the other group I'm going to throw in there is this board of commissioners. On the outside, people looking in as to how the county collectively has responded during these extraordinary circumstances, it's not done in a vacuum. It is done with exhaustive communication amongst this board, amongst the county manager, amongst the county staff. None of the decisions that this county and our county's, our commissioner's chairman has undertaken has been done lightly. Commissioner White's a business owner, significantly invested in the Outer Banks, and I can tell you that he and I are concerned over the impact to the businesses throughout the county, but especially the Outer Banks. One of the things that, and I'll use Dare County, forced Currituck's hand, is we don't control the bridge, and anyone that doesn't think we need a mid-county bridge, that ought to be evidence for it. When Dare County controls, our ability to get to our county until we figure out a way around it, that's, that's serious. Additionally, the one group that I'm personally invested in is our troops that are deployed overseas. I have a son that was supposed to be back earlier this month, who I talked to him yesterday. He's, they said the minimum he'll be deployed is until after May. He's deployed in Spain, and you got guys and gals that have been deployed for six months, nine months, who don't know when they're going to be allowed to come home. And so, if, I would encourage all of us to keep them in our thoughts and prayers, because if they're healthy and they're deployed, they're not going to risk either replacing them with a unit that may be infected coming over there or bringing them back so that they, they too might be subjected to health concerns. So I would ask everyone to keep them in your thoughts and prayers as well. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner McCord?
Like, I just would touch on, it's tough times. I mean, how many times do you ever remember the March Madness basketball tournament canceled and all the stuff going on for the seniors in school, the kids in college, and all these kids coming home? It's a lot of, lot of change, and, you know, it's a lot of stuff. Touching on far as, I received a lot of questions at the sheriff's department as well as this commissioner. View the governor's order online. You can pull that up to see if you're allowed to go here and go there far as work. You know, just because of the 5:00 PM, an hour and a half ago, you know, you can still go to your doctor's appointments. You can still go to pick your kid up. You can go to work. There's nothing at the Virginia Line, I got that call today five or six times as well, you know, where you can come in that way. The rules I want to touch on real quick on the Dare County, just to save people if anybody's watching or listening, that, you know, if you don't have a Currituck County driver's license or a Dare County driver's license or some sort of permit, employee pay stub, whatever, you're not getting across that bridge in Dare County. It's just not happening. I believe, the chairman touched on the vote. You know, I mean, I get it. People want to go check on their houses, and they're trying every way, shape, or form, and it's not, you know, fun to tell somebody, no. I didn't have a good time yesterday telling people no all day long that they couldn't go to Corova, but it was something that we had to do. Where we touched on, it's not because we don't want them to go to the beach, it's, you know, because of the medical, you know, being able to have the, with all the crisis, you know, there's 18 beds and no ICU at the Outer Banks Hospital. So, I mean, like I said, that's why that stuff's done and put in place. The main thing is, and they always get left out, and I'm going to beat Owen to it, but dispatch, those women and men in there, that phone rings off the hook. It might be the only phone that rings more than mine or Owen's. But they, they do a phenomenal job, and, you know, if you've got a reason to call them, call them. You know, I had somebody call today on two kids playing in the yard that they were loud. So whoever that person was, please don't do that again. But, you know, like you said, they, like I said, 232-2424 is the easiest number to remember. If you need to call dispatch for something important, or if, obviously, if it's something majorly important, you can dial 911. The sheriff's department, like I said, the guys and gals are working, you know, endlessly, as well as other of the county staff, the EMS guys and guys and gals and firemen, everybody. Everybody's doing what they can do, and like I said, it's, it's not a fun thing for some of the stuff that we're having to do right now, but it's what we have to do to be safe to move forward, to be able to heal and get everything where it needs to be, and hopefully, this will end on the 30th of April, or maybe possibly before. Pretty much, that's it. The other thing is, too, if your, if your kids are home and you want an outdoor activity, between the jail staff or the jailies, far as cleaning up trash, I want to say they got about 133 bags and about four visits off of Tulsa Creek Road. and about four visits off of Tulsa Creek Road and some of the other side roads. So if your kid gets punished and they're homeschooling, you know, since what we got going on now, and I'm not saying to, you know, put them in a, put them in a reflective vest. Yeah, yeah, call, call the sheriff's office. We'll get you a trash bag. But no, I mean, you know, like I said, I seen, you know, we always laugh, and it's the biggest one, I hope this guy's not watching, but it's the biggest offender is the ones that they just failed to secure their load in the back of the pickup truck. And I had a guy fling three things out, and I usually give you one, and then two, you know, I might stop you. Well, when number three, when the two-liter Dr. Pepper bottle hit the patrol car, I stopped him, and I literally made him walk a football field south and a football field north and pick up trash. And we had just picked that road up five days before, and that guy came back with about 25 items. So, but he didn't get a ticket, but he did pick up a lot of trash. They'd stay out of that. So like I said, if your kid gets in trouble and they need a homeschool project, I got them one. Get them a reflective vest.
Hey, Currituck people.
Six feet, six feet away, and wear gloves and wash your hands.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Needed a little levity in these, in these times. Commissioner Jarvis.
You know, these are unusual, turbulent times, and I would just reiterate what was, what has been said here tonight. In these times of stress, in these times of turbulence, information is, is so critical. Stay away from rumors. If you're getting your information from Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter, you in most cases are getting hype, you're getting paranoia, you're getting false information. So I would say before you react to something you see on Facebook, or Twitter, or Instagram, before you spread more information, I would beg you to please go to the state site, go to our county website, and find out legitimate information. Businesses and households and governments are going to be making tough decisions in the month to come. Keeping your children confined inside or getting them outside in the backyard, especially if they're teenagers, is so tough. We're seeing people who are losing loved ones that can't hold a funeral, that can't properly say goodbye to their loved ones. We're seeing people give birth, and they've got no one there to celebrate that birth with at the time. We're, we're seeing weddings that are being done and posted online, because this is, for the next few weeks, this is our new normal, and it's, it's grueling. It's tough for our seniors that look forward to prom and graduation and all those rites of passage in the spring that are simply not taking place at this time, and it's tough. But in all of that, we found ways to celebrate. We found ways to make people know that even though we can't be physically together, we can be together virtually. We can support each other in many different ways. We can go to church, even though we don't physically go to church. We can be there with sermons. We can be there with our teachers. Today, Jarvisburg Elementary, I don't know if every school did this, or if this was just our prize in the lower end of the county. These teachers behind a sheriff's deputy drove the streets, including Reggie Owens Drive that I live on, and they blew the horns, and they got people out of their houses to wave and let, let the students know that the teachers, they miss them. That they, they're, they're working with them, but they're, they're still thinking of them. And it's just been, it's stories and things like that that just really make me realize we are going to come out of this different, but we're going to come out of this better. And I just want to say a big thank you, kind of reiterating what Kitty said. Thank you to the people that are reaching out and helping your neighbor. Thank you to our county staff, first responders, but everybody is working in a different way, and they're keeping this county running. Thank you to the businesses that have reached out. Blue Water Restoration sent masks and gloves and sanitizer to our Meals on Wheels programs for our schools to make sure that those women and men who are handing out free meals are protected. Thank you to the hundreds of businesses that have done that. And know that we're going to get through this. We've got tough decisions. We've got tough days, but we are going to get through this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing? Griggs, Griggs Elementary participated in that as well. And like she said, the Meals on Wheels, the, the staff that has done that, and the kids, they're so thankful. It's cra- I mean, I mean, I was partook in one day, and 38 kids got bags of food, and every kid said, "Thank you." Everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Etheridge.
Well, I'll just ditto what everybody has said, but add a couple of more things. I know week before last, we checked on the supply lines for our food line in Harris Teeter. We've been assured that the supply lines are there. But I would ask people, because I went in food line this afternoon in Moyoc, and there's still a lot of empty shelves. People are grabbing everything they can. We've talked about it here, you know, think about your neighbors. I see this as an opportunity to reconnect our communities. Call your neighbors, call your friends, check on them, if not daily, every other day. Gives a sense of good feelings when you call somebody, or they call you and say, "How are you doing?" And it's important we do that. And I do see this, and you know, some people saying, "Well, y'all aren't meeting like you should." I've always believed the old saying, "Life, liberty, and freedom is in jeopardy when a government body is in a meeting." So keep that in mind. And one last thing, Wednesday will be April 1st, April Fool's Day. And I hope people don't take that opportunity to make jokes about what's going on in this country. Because this is serious, folks, and we need to pay attention to it and, and not make light of it. But we do need to be optimistic, as it was said here earlier, that we are going to come through this. I think the President said the other day, "There's nothing Americans can't do when they put their mind to it and work together to get it accomplished." And I hope that is the case. And lastly, I think we all need to touch our knees on the floor every night and ask our Heavenly Father to please keep this from being as bad as some of them are saying it could be. 200,000 people, 200,000 Americans die from this. Let's hope that does not happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One last thing that came to mind, we've talked about, we touched on in our work session. The beaches in Corolla, Corova, Currituck Outer Banks, for now, they are open. We have not closed those. So if you're, if you're over there, they're, they're available to you. If you're a county resident, they're available to you. But you need to be responsible. This past weekend, we saw pictures of groups of people pretty well packed in together, and you got 12 miles of beach on the four-wheel drive area to drive on, and another 12 miles of beach below that. So please be responsible, spread out. We know you want to see your friends, especially now. You know, Owen, you hit on it a little bit, it was, it was actually one of the Facebook things that someone put up a meme of before and after, before we were on our devices, after while walking. And, and that's happened. People are going out in the neighborhood. They're actually meeting their neighbors again and moving around. So we recognize that, that, that human interaction and getting together is a normal activity. But please be respectful and, and help stop the spread.
Can I ask you one thing? You were talking about the beaches open. I heard that Virginia Beach was closing their restrooms. Are, are facilities still open on the beaches?
All of our public restrooms are closed.
Okay.
It's a plan according to.
It's the place, what is it, on the right-hand side going down the, I wanted to call it the visitors center, but it's not. The rest area, is it closed?
I believe the state of North Carolina has closed all rest areas, yes, ma'am. One other thing that, just so folks are aware, in the Governor's Orders, since we're talking about common recreation space, the Governor's Order does close all playgrounds. So all county playgrounds, previously, we had closed them, but it is an official order from the Governor now that playgrounds are closed.
What, do you have them roped off with the yellow tape?
I, I like to believe that folks will respect the orders of the Governor, so we don't have them roped off right now. I just, I'd ask people to be respectful.
We can do that if, if it becomes necessary, I guess.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One other thing, the last thing anybody should want to do is visit the hospital, right? And one of the things that you can do to help prevent that is, while accidents occur, especially with kids, keep in mind, if you have to go to the emergency room, or you have to go to CHKD for an extended stay, depending on the way this thing breaks, you need to make sure that the consequences, that the risks outweigh the consequences. In other words, we, parents, we need to keep an eye on our kids and try and prevent them from doing the stuff that we used to do when we were kids.
Skateboards, bicycle jumps, good stuff.
Motorcycles.
Right, motorcycles, as I was on this weekend. Okay. Anything further from the board? All right, thank you all. Next item on the agenda this evening is new business. Consideration of amendments to the Code of Ordinances to add virtual meetings. This would amend Section 2-56 and Section 2-100 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances to revive for remote participation at a meeting during a state of emergency. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. McCree to talk about, what did he put before this evening?
Mr. Chairman, as discussed during the work session, your ordinance currently prohibits the, a member of the Board of Commissioners' participation in a meeting unless physically present. And similarly, members of your advisory boards are also prohibited from participating in a meeting unless physically present. So what is proposed before you, and given the circumstances under which we're experiencing, is whether you want to consider amending your, those two ordinance provisions such that in a state of emergency declared under Chapter 166A of the General Statutes of North Carolina, which we are currently under, a member of the Board of Commissioners and a member of an advisory board could participate in a meeting of their respective boards without being physically present in the room. And so that would necessitate then, of course, what would constitute an electronic meeting, whether some or all of the board members are participating electronically. Now, under the Open Meetings Law, logistically, we'd have to be able to figure out a way that the public would have the ability to, well, first of all, that the board members have the ability to hear one another and interact during the course of the meeting, and then that the public would also have the ability to hear what is going on during the course of the meeting, as well as if there are particular circumstances where they need to participate, such as a public hearing, that they would be able to do that. But, but if, so, so the, the other recommendation would be that if you decide to go, go a route that would allow for a board member's remote participation in a meeting, that the board may, may also want to consider that a, a remote meeting be held only in very limited circumstances. Be glad to answer any questions.
Do we have the capability, I mean, do we have a platform that would allow us to do this remotely? Like, I mean, I've used Zoom and Google Hangouts before, but does the county have a way that we could make this work if the necessity arose?
I, I think it would depend on what kind of actions the board wanted to consider at a remote meeting. If it was something like an update to an emergency declaration, or if it was something like a big budget amendment that needed to happen. We can actually do that by emailing the board, posting the backup documentation on the website, and then just having a verbal conversation with a conference call where the general public can listen in, and maybe even the conference call is live streaming here. I don't think that we have the capabilities to do a public hearing. And even if we did have the capabilities to do a public hearing, I'd recommend against that, and I think the county attorney even says that quasi-judicial definitely can't happen. So it would, it would only be if we had an incident where, I'm trying to think of a good example, if we had to have a major budget amendment because of something with this event, you know, that typically would, would be a very straightforward matter, you know, I think that's the instance where we could do it. But a public hearing, I don't think we have the technology capabilities. I wouldn't want to try it out at a public hearing, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
You wouldn't even add it to the agenda.
Yeah, we just wouldn't even be.
Yeah, it would, the, the meeting specifically would be catered probably very similar to what we're doing here tonight to deal with housekeeping issues and things of that nature.
The only question that came to mind was if, if, if we're, who's ever using their computer wherever they're logged into, or what site they're on, I mean, whatever, internet, or is there any risk of any security breach in doing that through computers?
So our, our IT department has done a lot. Obviously, we're going to have a lot of people teleworking. They've done everything they can to make sure our IT security is up to date. I'm not going to tell you that it can't happen. Obviously, it can. It happens every day. Durham had an attack, I think, three months ago, but we are, I have a lot of faith in our IT department and the things that they've changed behind the scenes that I can't even explain, because it's beyond my technical knowledge. If we did a meeting, though, it probably, we might not even use computers. I mean, what I'm saying is whatever we did would be so basic that we probably would just use telephones.
Okay.
What if, like, say there was like a major budget amendment that had to be, I mean, you know, any kind of business we, we do in the county is put out there so everybody knows what we're doing. If there was a budget amendment where Public Works, something happened, and they had to move money to something like this, I mean, is that, I mean, you know, something not, I wouldn't say that's not major, but would that be something where, you know, we might have to do that this month because something happens, a hole in one of the buildings, which hopefully doesn't, you know, where we had to move money or something, capital money?
So I won't name the community. There's a community in North Carolina right now, for instance, they were doing scheduled maintenance on their water plant. It's in the western half of the state. They have three pumps. Two pumps, they took offline. Their one pump failed. And then the community that they had a connection with to provide backup dropped a pump. And so if you had like a situation like that, worst-case scenario, then you could move money in order to get a new pump ordered. Another thing I could think of that might come up is if, if through this process, there was some kind of FEMA declaration that we needed to act on quickly in order to get the county, you know, in line for some kind of federal reimbursement, then nothing happens fast with FEMA, so that's maybe a bad example. But that's, that's the kind of stuff that I could see us needing it for. But yeah, I mean, a public hearing, something to that level, I, I wouldn't even recommend that we would do anything like that.
How much, how much money can you move on a day basis in an emergency situation?
I believe that as long as it's within the line items of a department, I can move it. So if it's in Public Works, I can move it from, I can't move from salaries to operating costs. And I can't move from capital to operating, but I can move within there. We bring everything to the board just as a best practice, but those things technically can be signed off by the county manager. It would be if you had a major expense. And like I said, it's just an eventuality. I don't think any communities have ever really even got that far down this road. It's just with everything going on. It's a conversation worth having, I think, with their limitations.
If that's the case, right, just in that the examples that we have talked about or discussed here, most of them seem to be, or come, at least appear to me to be a slam dunk type of event. So what precludes us from having the meeting? And if only four board members are able to show up for whatever health purposes, whatever reasons, that's still a quorum, and we still get a vote?
I think we're looking at non-quorum. If we weren't able to meet a quorum, that's when this was most important. So if we had three, four board members were out for various reasons, maybe the couples were down, spouse we were taking care of, or immediate family member, they're not able to attend, it lets us conduct business.
Okay, so with the, the authority that the county manager has right now, other than best practices, because the consequences of you moving money where it shouldn't go for purposes it shouldn't be, those are obvious. What, what risk, what do you need, right? Do you need this to operate? Do we need this to respond in a timely manner?
It's such a hard question in the world that we live in today, you know. Three months ago, I'd tell you, "No, I don't need this." I think that you could add some language, and I'm looking at the county attorney, that, that you could only meet remotely if a quorum couldn't be pulled together.
Or met physically.
Yeah, I mean, I think that some language that, you could even put that, that caveat on it, so.
And I, and I, I would approve, I would agree or approve of that, that that be added.
And, and so by doing that, not only do you have to have a state of emergency, you have to have confirmation for me in writing, email, text, or even a phone call with a note for me. I've called each one of you, and five of you.
Are down.
Naked.
Cannot make it. Four of you can't make it because you're either quarantined. The other thing that this does have the ability to do, and we're talking about it with this event, but if we had a, a major hurricane, which is far more likely. event, but if we had a, a major hurricane, which is far more likely here than another pandemic, hopefully.
And blows our meeting room down.
I mean.
How's your mail?
And, and we had, and we, we couldn't, you all had to go to different places, right? I mean, we were, we were evacuated to different physical places and not in a place where we could easily gather. It would have a benefit then. So adding the language that a quorum can't physically get together because of extenuating circumstances.
That's good, yeah.
Might clear that up.
And a declaration.
We need to make a motion for that?
Um, well, they, and the, there's, there's two things here. There's the conversation about the Board of Commissioners, which we would need. That's something I could see. Conversation about advisory boards, I don't really see that being a, a need.
No, no, I do not either.
Hey, one of the things that we could include in this suffered from it, though, is to bring back a report, what it would take, equipment-wise, to be able to do this, because like you said, a hurricane is more likely once we get past this.
Yeah, from, from an equipment standpoint, we can, we can definitely look into what it would take to make sure that that meeting's still open to the public. And I will say this is kind of outside this conversation, you all should be very proud of the capabilities that Kur Tuck County has. I mean, there are counties far bigger than us who are not, who do not have the telework opportunities that we have. And, and part of that's just, is the way it goes, you know, I'll, I'll say this pure dumb luck in some ways, because we just replaced all of our computers, and some of these laptops that aren't really, you shouldn't operate them, they wouldn't operate well with Windows 10. We had 70 laptops sitting in IT that we hadn't surplus yet. I mean, we don't sit on that kind of reserve of laptops. No county does. I can tell you from now on, I think counties will keep a reserve of laptops. But, and, and then just the staff being able to make it work. Having said all that, we can do an analysis of what it would take to be able to stand up a meeting if we were scattered geographically. The other thing that, that I think every community's gonna have to do is they, as we come through this, is look at your continuity of operations plan and figure out what that looks like, department by department, so.
I thought you were gonna say you were brilliant in hiring the IT director.
The, the IT director's done a great job, but the, all of the employees have done a great job adapting. Change is hard. Change is hard for people. And people are, you've got a really resilient staff. You should be very proud of them.
We are.
We are. Okay. Any further discussion on this? I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval with the, the additional verbiage that would say if, upon the county manager's survey, if a physical quorum could not be met, that, that a, that, and under the declaration, state of emergency, that it would go forward.
Okay.
Just to add to, were we looking at, some made a comment, this just for the Board of Commissioners, that we don't need this for the, just for the Board of Commissioners.
I'll second his motion.
Okay. So do you need that to be part of the motion? Ike, does it only apply to the Board of Commissioners?
So, so you can say, and?
This only applies to Board of Commissioners.
It applies to Part 1 of the order.
As you move into Part 1 of the ordinance, with the language, the case that's presented in the motion.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. Would you withdraw?
I'll second.
Would you withdraw your initial second?
I would withdraw the initial.
And add that?
I would like to add the, the additional language as described by county's attorney under Part 1, that it would be applicable to Part 1.
And then I'll second that, that one.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Thank you all. And any further things to discuss this evening before we adjourn? Okay. I'll open the floor for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all.
You may be safe.